All right, shall we? All right. Good evening, everyone. If you'd kind of welcome to the town council meet if you kindly rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Paul is going to be here shortly with his announcements. The only thing that I have for announcements is upcoming meetings Thursday, September 26th, Thursday, October 10th, and Thursday, October 24th. All those meetings are here in the Matthew Thornton Room at 7:00 PM. Legislative comments from the press and public. Anybody here would like to address the council? Seeing none. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, no appointments, no public hearings, so legislative updates. Rosemarie, morning. Hi, Rosemarie.
Hello, thank you. For the record, my name is Representative Rosemarie Rung, and earlier today I sent you a two-year synopsis of what I've been doing at the State House, bills I've sponsored. This does not include bills I've co-sponsored, but it's bills I've prime-sponsored and what the outcome of those have been. There is a, the final, the final bill was an interim study yesterday in front of Commerce, but it was just a working session, so I don't really know if that's going to be recommended for further action or not. But I'm not going to go through this unless you have any questions. I'll share it with the public. But what I really came here is I've been meeting voters the last several weeks, and today I was walking through my neighborhood. I was on Vista Way and Roundtree, and I was really startled by the level of noise from the turnpike. And I know years ago, I forget when it was, it might have been 2015, when DOT came, the Turnpike Division came and presented their plan, and they talked about which neighborhoods had qualified for sound barriers. And they use a federal calculation that measured the decibels, then they estimated what the decibels would be with the widening. They took into account the number of, I forget what they call, like targets. It was either like a school or homes. And then when I had a conversation with them within the last year, they said, well, they also take account if the property is, if the, if the front yard is facing the turnpike or not, because they think people mostly recreate in their backyards, and so they will tolerate a higher decibel level if, if the front yard is facing. But I, I'm, I come here with a request of the town council to see if we could have an independent sound engineer go back and test that neighborhood. And also Backover Road, since the state has done a lot of clear cutting of trees for the widening, Backover Road has changed considerably, and I think we should really get some independent, I'd like the town to take some leadership in this, to, to get current sound measurements of those homes along Backover Road, Vista Way, and Roundtree, particularly the, I think it's around 17 Vista Way. And it is true, I was out there with a neighbor today, and it's like a sound tunnel. At one end of the road, at one end, I think it's like the 17, it's extremely loud. And, and then as you go further down the street, it's less loud, but it's still extremely disturbing. You can't have a conversation with somebody, and this was probably around 4:00, 4:30. So I'd like to ask the town if they could pursue that. I know in the, years ago when the proposal first came, there were some residents around Clay Street area, Berkeley Street, Clay Street, opposite of, across Wire Road from Mallard Point, who did not qualify, but they did have an independent engineer come out and measure, and it turned out that the state was wrong. I have to believe the state is wrong, and I think that this would be a good time to establish what are those, what are the accurate measurements and parameters, because I would be shocked if those neighborhoods wouldn't qualify for a sound barrier. And I think that that should be, the widening project should be amended to include that. Now that being said, Senator Chanley introduced a bill this year, which is currently in study, that would enable towns to be able to make the decision to have sound barriers or not, although they would likely have to raise some of the money. I think there was a component of the bill that there would be a match. That's, that's going to be studied, but I did confirm with Commissioner Cass a few months ago that all that widening project will always leave room for sound barriers. So it's not as though if they, they do the widening project that without sound barriers, that it would exclude sound barriers from being added at a later date. But I, I feel really compelled that this really needs to be a priority, because it's the quality of life for people on Backover Road and in that Vista Way, Roundtree neighborhood, it's, it's just really sad. They, they can't go outside. One woman said, I can't even open my windows, no matter how hot the day is. I, I can't. And we were having a difficult time having a conversation. Now, I can't imagine what it would be when there's no leaves on the tree. So that's what I came here to beg for, and I hope there's some follow-up by the town council. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Actually, I, this was a conversation that we had somewhat extensively at a couple of occasions, and part of me thought that it was taken care of, because in Bedford there's a wall, a wooden wall that's been going up, and there were very few homes impacted by that area. I know where you speak, because I walk the same area myself, and it is extremely loud.
Mr. Paul, were you here when she started the conversation?
I got the gist of it.
Yeah, so Vista, Roundtree. But I kind of was also hoping that our senator would be able to muscle in a better fashion. I mean, I appreciate the numbers, but...
Yeah, I, I heard from a constituent on Backover Road about that, and both Senator Chanley's making inquiries, we haven't heard back, and I have too, but the initial response we've had is that that's not a sound barrier, it's a privacy fence. So it wasn't, it, it, it's not as though they qualified, it's, but I don't know how they got that, how they were approved for a privacy fence.
Yeah, because it's very, not very private at the other places.
But it's apparently, you know, a sound barrier is constructed in a way that it muffles the sound, so this, a privacy fence may not have that, the components to be able to do that. But I don't have confirmation from the, the top.
Sure. Yeah, I just saw that, I had assumption.
I know Senator Ricciardi from Bedford has put a bill in, or is going to put a bill in for, because of that area, for a sound barrier, up and down, that section from Bedford down, and has asked for our support when I met with her in the spring on this, but that was waiting till this time through. If you would like, we, we could start looking into getting our own sound engineer out there to see what's going on with it. It's up to the council. I just don't know how much that study would be.
Right. Does NRPC do anything like that?
I don't know, to be quite honest with you. That would be something that we could look into. Dawn's here, so we could look into that with NRPC as well, but we, we could hire our own sound engineer and go out there. It's just, we've broached this with DOT numerous times when they were here for their public hearings and everything, and we don't have money in that budget. That's what they keep saying. We don't have money in the project for sound barriers. We don't have money in the project for sound barriers. So we, we can definitely, it doesn't stop us from proving them wrong, if it is wrong.
Right.
So if the council would like us to proceed, we, as a town, we can definitely get our own people and... Now that they did the construction there, they're going out to bid for the second phase, so it might get louder too down the road a little bit in the old Brick Mill Parkway area, the Brick Mill Parkway as well, because they're pretty close to the highway as well.
Of course, then the argument's going to be, well, you can't measure the sound while construction's going on, because that's not the valid, but there must be ways that you can work around that different times or whatever.
Yeah. If you could look into pricing on that, that would be a good idea, I think.
Because I think those original measurements were taken, it must have been around 2016, 2017, and I think it's changed then, even though the, the road hasn't been widening, what do they base it on when they, before they start the, the project development? Or, to me, it's really gotten worse since, in the last five years, but it seems as though the measurement should be done before the project begins. It doesn't have to be that long ago. But, so I see it really as two different components. One, it's confirming that, that area, those areas do qualify for sound barriers under, I believe it's a federal DOT formula. And then the second part would be the funding, but at least if they could be designated as a qualifying area, we can work on the funding with the, with the next budget year at the state level at least. But I think getting qualified is going to be the most important part right now, and that's going to take additional measurements.
Yeah. Very good. All right. Anybody else have any questions for Rosemarie?
I can just see the response.
I can, the response that if we take Continental Boulevard, they'll be happy to put up a sound barrier.
Yeah. We, we have a strategy for that, Tom. Yeah, yeah, we have a, yeah.
It's industrial drive now.
Yeah.
Industrial, sorry, my bad.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rosemarie, appreciate it. Morning, you also, Nancy?
Oh, thank you. We have veto day coming up on October 10th to have a chance of sort of our last ditch attempt to try to pass things that the governor may have vetoed. And one of the bills that we will try to override is House Bill 1415, which really matters to me, and I think to us. It's a bill that I wrote this session to require that PFAS, PFAS polluters who contaminate groundwater in excess of 100 parts per trillion are required when decommissioning or shutting down to adhere to federal regulations, which I worked with the Attorney General and DES on that. And it's had great support in the House and the Senate, I mean, full support, you know, 424 people, no, no challenges getting it through, it passed on voice votes in both places. So, you know, it certainly would, matters to our community, but there are other communities throughout New Hampshire that could benefit from that as well. Unfortunately, the governor vetoed it, and that will be our challenge and our hope that maybe we can override that. Not sure that's going to happen, but I'm, I'm hopeful. The other thing is this till tomorrow, we have the opportunity to put in early bills, and I did put one bill in, actually, it was the first, it's number 01, so it was the first bill that went in, Legislative Service Request. It doesn't have a bill number yet, but, and it's, you know, we're all, you know, all, all reps and town council members have been concerned about the state's attempt to dump state property on us so that we could pick up the expense of that, and that just doesn't seem right. We fought it, and, you know, we got a supposedly a five-year reprieve before they can bring it back, but I'm always concerned that, there's always workarounds of those things too, so I think we just need to put it to bed. I'm hopeful this will have some good support statewide, working with the New Hampshire Municipal Association, who represents all of the towns and cities here, so they're in, working with me on that, so should get good support. I would think if every community thinks that this could happen to them too, they might be willing to show up and say, yes, please. And the bill really, the Reader's Digest, the language, is the state of New Hampshire, its department and agencies cannot transfer ownership of state-owned real property to include such things as highways, bridges, roadways, buildings, et cetera, nor reclassify state-owned real property such that responsibility for any funding, operation, maintenance, oversight, indoor repairs to such property is placed upon New Hampshire municipalities without prior approval of the municipality, either by majority vote of town, city residents, or majority vote of the local governing body. So New Hampshire Municipal Association attorneys have given me some additional language that will sort of massage and, you know, get it, get it right, but that's the bill. So we'll be asking Merrimack to come and support that, and as well as, as other towns. So that's the priority right now for me. I will have another opportunity to do that in November to, to put in additional bills. So that's the update.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, Paul, would you like to do your announcements and the management report simultaneously?
Yeah, I want to apologize. I don't know, I was, I told you today 7:30, and it just stuck in my head.
Oh, yeah, so that's what you were doing. I told him, I said, he told me I'll see you at 7:30.
7:30, yeah, 7:00, and I said, my wife, I'm like, yeah, just wake, I'm taking a quick 15-minute nap, just wake me up so I can get there for 7:30, and I'm like, so I'm sorry.
So I did wake you up.
It did, it did. But you guys really did fly through the first couple agenda items, so I don't know if it's me.
I think, because Nancy's back.
There you go. Thank you.
I should have worn my shirt with the treadmill.
Okay, so a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the long-awaited official opening of South Heagan River Trail will be held on September 26th at 11:00 AM in Watson Park at the trail entrance. All members are welcomed, rain or shine. We're going to hold this on rain or shine. Just if the council could let Becky in my office or myself know if you plan on attending, just so we, we have it. So it's the 26th of September, which is a Thursday, two weeks from now, at 11 o'clock at Watson Park, so just let me know.
When?
26th at 11 o'clock. Today, September 12th, is the last night for the transition, will be open for extended hours. They will resume normal business hours from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Tuesday through Saturday until next spring. The next household Hazard's Place Collection is Saturday, October 5th, from 8:00 AM until noon in Nashville, at Nashville Public Works Garage located at 9 Stadium Drive. This is the second-to-last collection of the season. And finally, I had the opportunity last night to go and be at the Legion for their 9/11 ceremony, which was, our honor guard was there, and some of our fire department was there, and it was a last-minute thing. One of my friends that is part of the Sons of the Legion auxiliary group asked me if I'd go and say a few words. So I just want to read what I said last night out loud, so everybody knows what was said. Twenty-three years ago today, our nation experienced one of the darkest days with the attacks in New York, Washington, and Pennsylvania. For many of us in New England, our connections to that terrible day are personal and will forever hold the memories of those we lost in our hearts. But it was in this dark, in this darkness that we also showed the greatness of our country. Strangers helping strangers, whether it was, whether it was firefighters, police, and EMS who selfishly responded as word of the tragedy spread. To the outpouring of support in the days after for long lines to donate blood, to little efforts like raising money for the victims at car washes throughout the states, or even lemonade stands. It was said that September 11th was one of the worst days we've ever seen, but it brought out the best in all of us. We as a country came together as one to help our fellow citizens. Because of that, because of that, that is what we as Americans do. Today, we gather to memorialize those who died, we commit to remembering their memory and honoring their legacy. I want to thank the first responders and the thousands of firefighters, police officers, EMS personnel, and military personnel who answered the call of duty on that fateful day and the months and the years to come. In some cases, they made the ultimate sacrifices in service to others. I also want to thank those first responders who traveled to Ground Zero in the days and weeks after the attack to aid in the search, rescue, and recovery efforts. Finally, I want to thank the thousands of ordinary men and women who stepped up when our country needed them the most. We will never forget what happened on 9/11. So, and then the commander of the Legion spoke, and the commander of the Legion is a, was actually stationed in the Air Force at that time, and they got the call at like 9:30, and they all knew something bad has happened, and they all stood up, and he said, I want to say they had 18 jets ready, stand by within five minutes to get up off the ground and help. So it's one of those events that we'll never forget. My cousin, who's a schoolteacher in New York, they did a 9/11 tribute, and as he's sitting there looking at the kids, he said, none of these children were born or even know what happened. So it is upon us to let people understand why we fought, and why we did Operation Freedom, and why we have this war against terrorism in the country, and those who suffered the ultimate sacrifice with their lives. So, I know the town does it every five years at big anniversaries, but the Legion does do it every year for their service members, so. It was a nice event. Next year will be the 24th, and then two years will be the 25th, so, you know, it's already been 23 years, and...
Yeah, that's amazing.
You know, I know all, I know everyone in this room can say where they were and what they were doing at 9:03 in the morning on September 11th, so, but I do want to thank all the servicemen that, and first responders for their efforts during the time of need, so, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for that. I'm glad you were able to make that.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. First item on our agenda is Consent Agenda. It's the final reading of proposed amendments to the Town of Merrimack Zonion ordinance and building code. Somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Tom Cannon, second by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? 7-0-0. Thank you. We have no old business, item number one on our new business, council to issue a proclamation designated Merrimack Fire Department's 100th Anniversary. And that's amazing, too. We, they had on the day, I guess it turned out to be the day after the anniversary, they had a big swearing-in over at where the, where Buckley's Cafe is, and, and they, that was, that was a really nice evening, and so we knew this was coming up. But what I'll do is, I'm going to read the proclamation. Chief, did you want to speak to anything? Okay. All right, I'll, I'll read the proclamation. Town of Merrimack, Town Council Proclamation, Merrimack Fire Department's 100th Anniversary. Whereas in 1825, the inhabitants of South Heagan Village petitioned the Senate and House of Representatives in the General Court for fire protection and security of said village from accidents of fire and to be incorporated into a fire engine company, and whereas fire engine company in Merrimack was incorporated and approved by the General Court on June 20th, 1825. Okay, whereas during the 1924 town meeting, warrant Article 12 was acted on favorably by the town voter, by the town voters, the formation of the fire department, and whereas a committee of five was selected to purchase the first fire truck, and by law, the Board of Selectment appointed three fire wards to oversee the new fire department, with Josiah Henderson serving as Pet First Fire Chief. And whereas on May 12th, 1924, with 38 volunteers present, the fire department held its first organizational meeting in the hall above Abbott's store. And whereas in 18, 1986, the Merrimack Ambulance Rescue Service was incorporated into the fire department, as EMS division and paramedic-level emergency medical services was available on a 24-hour basis. Whereas there are three station locations within the Town of Merrimack to include the Reed's Ferry Station, Central Fire, and South Merrimack, with only the Central and South stations currently active. Whereas the dedicated men and women of the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department continue to serve, protect, and provide exceptional services to the residents of the Town of Merrimack. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack hereby proclaim May 12th, 2024, as the Merrimack Fire Department's 100th Anniversary. Proclaim this 12th day of September 2024 by the Merrimack Town Council.
I'd like to move for the approval of the proclamation as read.
Second.
A motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? 7-0-0. And I apologize for the stumbling, but I'm reading 1825, and it's goofing my head up. I'm going, wait a minute, it's not 100 years, it's totally a different thing, so I apologize for that. I'm trying to read back while I'm reading, and it was not working.
So the reason why we brought it forward in September is because they were supposed to be having a ball in September, and that would have been presented after you signed it at the ball. However, the ball has been postponed for not being able to get caterers to actually help them out. So it's been postponed, but that is why people are saying, well, how come you're saying it's May 12th and we're doing it in September? That is why, because we were going to present this at their ball that they have.
Very good. Keep us in the loop on that. All right. And the next item on the agenda is the Fire Department's 100th Anniversary Declaration, and here to present that is Representative Maureen Mooney.
She's making you work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this one?
It is now. It is now.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, and good evening, members of the town council. For the record, I am State Representative Maureen Mooney. Representative Janine Nodder secured a declaration from the New Hampshire House Speaker to commemorate this event back in May, and so I have that now. Representative Nodder could not be with us this evening, so I'll read this. It's so important and so detailed. It would be great for our listeners and the public to know just how important this occasion is.
Okay.
A declaration in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. Whereas this month of May, 2024, begins the 100th anniversary of the Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department. And whereas, on Monday, May 12th, 1924, a newly-appointed Board of Fire Ward's organized the first meeting that created what is now known today as the Merrimack Fire Department. And whereas, we remember the members of the first-ever board, and the first members of the fire department, Josiah Henderson, the first chief of the department, Arthur Gordon, the first deputy chief, and Morris Henderson, clerk of department. And whereas, Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department provides responsive and caring service to protect and improve the quality of life for all Merrimack residents. And whereas, we are proud of the hard work and dedication that each division brings to provide fire safety to our town, and would like to recognize the importance of our emergency medical services, the engine company, ladder and rescue companies, and the emergency management and office of the fire marshal. And declared that the New Hampshire House of Representatives recognizes this incredible milestone, as the Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department continues to be an integral part of our community. And be it further declared, by virtue of my signature inscribed below, the New Hampshire House of Representatives does thank the Merrimack Fire and Rescue Department for all that they do to keep everyone safe, and wish them good health and safety in their day-to-day operations. Dated the 7th day of May, 2024, Sherman A. Packard, Speaker of the New Hampshire House. I'll present this now to our chief. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Representative.
There you go.
Thank you all for recognizing our 100th anniversary. Yeah, unfortunately, some of our events have been postponed, trying to get things lined up and coordinated, but we are trying to do a couple more events before the year ends, because it's a whole year of celebration for us. You know, 100 years of service to the community as a professionalized organization certainly is, is a milestone, as, as she just said, so we're grateful to be helpful to anybody that needs us, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Chief, when are we going to get to see the new truck? I'm sorry, I should have caught you before you got that far. And you didn't really need to enter, you could get us back to us.
So, so any one of you can stop by and see the new truck at any time you wish. It is at central headquarters, it's not in service yet. The dealership just went over some operational training with the staff. The aerial training will begin at the end of the month and go into October, so that we have a full concept and understanding and training on how the truck works and operates. Then it will be some time for our staff to get confident and comfortable with the piece of equipment, as well as buying extra pieces to put on it. So it's going to be a little bit... So, it's gonna be a little bit, before the truck fully goes into service, my hope is we get it done hopefully by the end of October. That's when we're looking to put it in full service. But we've had great comments from the public that have stopped by to see it. The staff, you'll see it driving around town, because we are encouraging them to drive the truck to get comfortable with it, because it is a different piece of equipment. It's not like the last truck that we had, and it certainly, it's not an engine that they drive every day. It is a different piece of equipment, so you may see it driving around town, but certainly feel free to stop by and you certainly can take a look at it anytime you wish. And that goes to the public as well. Anybody wants to stop by, we're there every day, so whatever you'd like.
We hope you're there every day.
Yeah.
Number three on the, under new business is that council will consider the acceptance of a donated bench to be placed inside the horseshoe-shaped garden in Watson Park pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five E and Charter Article eight, Section fifteen. Is anybody here from the garden club, or are you gonna just be...
Yes.
You are? Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening.
Just make sure that mic is on, please. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Katie Little, and I'm a member of the Merrimack Garden Club. Would you like me to provide a summary of the request?
Sure, if you don't mind, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. As a member of the garden club, I help maintain the garden at Watson Park and I am also a volunteer gardener at the hospice house in Merrimack. And the hospice house is, has been renovating their gardens and their, their facility recently and they're, they're getting new benches. So, they offered the old benches to the volunteer gardeners and I felt that Watson Park could benefit from one of the benches that they're getting rid of. So, yeah, my, my request tonight is the addition of a bench in the horseshoe garden at Watson. I think it would be a nice addition for people to sit and enjoy their coffees from Buckley's or wherever. I know a lot of people go over there and look at the plants, but it would be nice to be able to sit down and enjoy them.
It looks like a nice little location for it and backup we have. Somebody have any questions? Nancy?
First of all, let me preface by saying, I think that it's a great idea. I just want to be able that we have a policy related to benches that everyone has to adhere to a certain criteria, which is not this. Should we, do we need to make an exception, or how?
Yeah, I would definitely make the exception for this because...
I agree.
You know, the garden club really has taken it on themselves to plant the flowers in that area and upkeep it. This is something that they're gonna, while the pitcher doesn't do it justice, they're gonna revive it so that it looks nice. And, yeah, but I would make an exception to our policy for this. And I believe that we did talk to Matt Casperius about this as well.
Right. I just want to be able to do it correctly.
Correct, yes.
And then protect what we need to do in the future.
Right. So, in the, in the motion, you would just say, suspend our policy as to benches?
For this particular...
For this, yeah.
So, I'd like to move to accept as an exception...
Yes.
...to the policy regarding benches within the town.
I would, I would actually say, I move to suspend our policy as to benches in the town for this special exemption that we're allowing the Merrimack Garden Club to erect a bench at Watson Park in the horseshoe area of Watson Park pursuant to RSA...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one colon ninety-five E and Charter Article eight fifteen. So, moved.
And I'll make a second.
So, I just want to make sure it's done correctly.
Yes.
Because I don't want us to be able to have problems in the future.
And it's easily defensible because they're there regularly, so...
Plus, it's a donation from...
Yeah.
The hospice house, really, is where it's coming from. That's right.
Very good. Tom?
So, I, I think it's a great idea. I guess I'm a little concerned because I haven't seen it and this picture doesn't look like it's in the best of shape and you're gonna help fix that up. What's the durability of it? Is it, is it, and what kind of condition will it be in five years? Or how are we gonna maintain it?
I did take a look at it in person and the wood is in good shape. There's no rot. The structural integrity is good. It doesn't have, I sat on it and moved it around. It doesn't seem to shake at all. So, you know, the structural integrity is good and the wood looks good. It just needs some sanding and stain, I think. And I, I ran my hand over it. It's a smooth surface, so there's no flaking, no chipping. No one's gonna get any splinters. They seem to be in, in good shape for, for the, the fact that they're getting discarded.
Is there a plan to put it on stones or something like that so that it's not sitting in the dirt, or...
I don't have a current plan for that.
Okay.
But if, if that's recommended, we can come up with a plan.
Something, I would think, to keep the wood out of the, out of the grass and dirt so that it would, that portion would have a better chance of surviving multiple years. I mean, maintenance of it, I guess, is, is my concern. Two years from now, three years from now, we still want it to look nice or, or replace it, and...
Yeah, we want it to look nice, too, as the garden club that maintains that space. So, I have spoken with the presidents of the garden club who agreed that this would be a good idea and as a member of the garden club, I can make sure it's on our agenda to maintain it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One other thing I would say is that we treat this like, well, the picnic tables that are down there. And then DPW brings those in in the spring, the summertime after, brings them in after the summer season and stores them for the winter, so they're not gonna get the harsh winter snow on them and things of that sort. And then in the spring, bring them back out. So, we'd be ending up just adding that to the list of things to remove at Watson Park at the time. Yeah. So, I just didn't want the garden club to think, oh, what happened to our bench if, if it goes out? They don't see it in the wintertime. It's because we removed them and taking care of it, so.
All right. Very good. Nancy?
Thank you. Just wondering, is it going to be affixed to the ground so it can't be moved or taken or, you know, I've seen those, I don't even know what you call them, those molded metal things that the...
Which the other bleachers have those.
Yes, just so it's locked in place, so it's not... I don't know what that we would mean for moving, but...
I think right now what we do down there for our picnic tables is we do a chain on them, but if you need...
Paul?
Paul, you're...
I'm sorry. Right now, I think, like, the picnic tables down there at Watson Park, we chain those. We, we look at it and work with the garden club. Dawn, Dawn's shaking her head back there, saying, yep, I'll work, we'll work with the garden club to make sure that it's not gonna end up in somebody's back of their pickup truck and on their front lawn one day, so, yeah. So, we'll work with the garden club to make sure it's affixed to the ground so that it's not easily tipped or anything else.
Great. All right. Everybody good? Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Mackenzie. Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thank you so much, Catherine. I think it's gonna look real nice there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Item four under new business, council to consider request to withdraw seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, ten cents from the wastewater capital reserve fund, excuse me, for the purpose of the replacement of the screw press gearbox and the replacement covers for the screw press at wastewater treatment plant. The balance was of the, well, I'll let Leo speak to it. Hi, Leo.
Good evening.
Yep, now it's on.
Good to see everybody. How is everybody tonight?
Very well, thank you.
Tom, I almost didn't recognize you without the beard. First time I've seen you since last winter. Good seeing you. Yeah, so I'm here tonight requesting the release of funds for replacement gearbox for the FKC screw press and replacement of the covers of the same unit. We had identified a hundred thousand dollars in the CIP for the replacement of the gearbox. We went out to bid for that and we had two bids. The low bidder was actually the company that built the machine at seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. So, less than we anticipated. And then the covers were twenty-two, six, seventy, ninety, which brings it to an even hundred thousand dollars. So, I think the question was, is how, how did that come out so perfectly? And I will tell you that I made a phone call to the company, FKC, because those covers are made by them only. They're proprietary. And I said, you know, I didn't tell them that I had two separate lines. I just told them that I had a hundred thousand dollars in the budget and if they could manage to shave some money off the cost of the covers and keep it at a hundred thousand, that it would be helpful to me. And we've done a lot of good for them. A lot of people come look at that machine and we've helped them sell other machines because they come see it. It's been a showpiece for them. So, they came back to me and said, sure, we can take it down from twenty-four thousand to the twenty-two, six, seven, ninety. So, that's how we ended up at the even one hundred thousand dollars. So, the thing to remember is, or to think about is, it's been in service since two thousand and eleven, which is hard to believe. I didn't think I'd be the guy here asking for money for this. So, it's been in service thirteen years. I looked at the run hours and it's got a hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine hours. So, there's eighty-seven hundred and sixty hours in a year. So, based on that, it's run continuously eleven out of those thirteen years. So, there's been downtime for weekly maintenance and things like that. So, it's got a lot of time on it. We've had bi-annual inspections done on it and FKC recommended oil testing on the gearbox to check condition. So, we use a third-party lab called Blackstone. We send the oil samples to them. They do an analysis of the oil. So, one of the things that's been going on for the last couple of years is the iron content in the oil samples is increasing. So, the recommendation is to change the oil, which we do, and it'll lower the iron, but then it comes back up again. So, I think we're getting to the point where we really need to think about changing this gearbox. I mean, it's the heart and soul of that machine. Lot of other things can break, but if that gearbox fails, we cannot process sludge at the wastewater treatment facility. You know, the other thing will be is, it's a seventy-day lead time to get that gearbox. So, if the one currently dies and I need to go get one, first of all, I won't have the luxury of bidding it. I'll have to take whatever price is thrown at me to replace it. And then we've got seventy days where we need mobile de-watering. So, back in two thousand and nineteen, I did some legwork and got some pricing quotes for mobile de-watering. At the time, even in that day, there was, the demobilization and demobilization was anywhere from two thousand to twelve thousand, so on either end, to bring it in and then take it down. And then rentals were anywhere from seventeen thousand a month to twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. So, you're looking at probably at least three months. So, at the end of the day, you're looking at, you know, I have the number, where is it? It's almost as much as the gearbox. You know, anywhere from fifty-one thousand to a hundred and eight thousand dollars in mobile de-watering costs. If we have the gearbox replaced, you know, we're looking at giving another fifteen, twenty years of life to that machine. Because everything else is replaceable. We already rebuilt the screw last year, replaced some of the screens, so we're keeping ahead of it. And I think it's, you know, it's something we really need to think about doing. We don't want to wait till it's a crisis. We want to stay ahead of it. And so, that's why I'm here, for the money.
Very good. Can a gearbox be rebuilt, the old one?
Well, that would be my plan. I, I believe it hasn't failed completely. So, I think we get the new gearbox, then we, we get the funds in the next couple of budgets to actually swap them out and then have the other one rebuilt and then we have a, we'll have a spare. And a rebuild would be less than buying a new one. But there's really no way to, I mean, you could take it out and have it rebuilt, but in the meantime, you'd have those mobile...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm saying for the future, you had to have...
Yes, yes. It's gonna, it's gonna give you a, a spare part on the shelf of that machine, so. I mean, everything about that machine is heavy duty and there isn't really anything on it that can't be rebuilt. The only thing that's not rebuildable probably is the motor and those are off the shelf, it's an off-the-shelf item, which the cost and the lead time, the reason the gearbox is so big is because the motor's only seven horsepower. If you saw the size of that machine, it would amaze you that a seven horsepower motor could, could run that machine.
Right.
So, it's pretty impressive.
Anybody have any questions?
No, that was very thorough. Appreciate it. Makes sense to me.
Somebody like to make a motion?
So, we proving a hundred thousand is how?
Yeah.
You gonna do it, or...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to withdraw a hundred thousand dollars from the wastewater capital reserve fund for the purpose of the replacement of screw press box, replacement covers for the screw press at the water treatment plant.
Second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Tom. Does the town manager need to...
If you want to put that... And authorize the town manager to sign any and all necessary paperwork.
Okay. Nothing further?
Second.
Second by, with the, with the quick amendment that was made, seconded by Tom Koenig.
Yeah.
All right, with no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thanks, Leo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
The investment policies are, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, he's becoming an old pro up here.
Oh. He hasn't fallen out of the chair yet.
Inside joke.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Policy's gonna take two seconds.
All right, we'll continue to go then.
That's a housekeeping.
Yeah, that's all housekeeping.
Item number five under new business, the council to review and consider the approval of the town's investment policy for the investment of public funds held by the town treasurer in accordance with RSA thirty-five colon nine and RSA forty-one colon twenty-nine for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
By RSA, we have to come in front of the council every year for you approve our investment policy. The investment policy is for how we invest public funds. We're not on, for people that are not aware of this, the town cannot invest their public funds in anything other than either money markets or just straight certificate of deposits. We have one hundred percent insurance on all our funds, whether it's FDIC or we make banks, if we're gonna deposit money in a bank, we make banks buy additional insurance so that if a bank does go under, the town is gonna get its one hundred percent of its money back. What the investment policy states is that there are certain criterias that if the bank does not want to insure, or if we don't want to use the extra cost for insurance up to a certain limit based on criteria such as their lending, their outstanding debt, their write-offs and things of that sort. This policy's been in place in my twenty years with the town. We've modified some of the numbers here or there. It's been in place for those twenty years. And prior to me, my predecessor in, in finance was Bob Levan, and he wrote this policy and it was in place for at least fifteen years while he was here. We have never lost a dollar, knock on wood. We don't plan to lose a dollar of, of town resources. But once again, we are in very, very secure investments such as CDs or savings accounts or money markets, things of that sort. We're not investing in the stock market this month. Those are, that is the trustee of trust funds. They have their separate investment policy.
Everybody good?
I'd like to move, I'd like to move to approve the town investments policy for the investment of public funds held by the town treasurer in accordance with the RSA thirty-five colon nine and RSA forty-one colon twenty-nine for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Is that second?
No.
Motion, motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer. Any further discussion on the investment policy? See, none. All those in favor of the policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Seven zero zero. All right. Done. Okay, sorry about that. Item number six under new business is a review for the revised code enforcement inspection fee schedule and...
Yeah, I have the fire chief here. He's in charge of code enforcement. During our retreat, one of our goals was to look at all our revenues. We, we are, we started looking at all the revenues. I asked the departments to look at all the revenues and the chief brought this forward. And basically, what it said, what he said to me is that our building, what we charged for our building permits, we haven't changed it since two thousand and four. So what he was looking at is a dollar in two thousand and four versus a dollar in two thousand and twenty-four with it. Some of the, some of the changes that we did make, we tried to make it easier for somebody who was trying to get a building permit. Used to be, you know, if you go for a building permit, it's this much a square, square foot for this and then it's this charge for that and everything else. So what we'd said is that if you're coming in for a residential now, if you're coming in for new construction or additions of an occupied space, flat sixty-eight cents a square foot. There, and a thirty-five dollar application fee. The thirty-five dollar application fee is for office staff to do the filing and maintenance and things that cover those costs. And we're not, we're basically covering costs at that thirty-five dollar application fee. The sixty-eight cents a square foot is break even on a two thousand square foot home. So anybody who builds a two thousand square foot home, based on what we used to do with the addings and subtractings of this amount for this and this amount of that, is break even and that comes out to, to, on a, basically a two thousand square foot home. There are a couple of other additions, if you're doing a swimming pool, it's a flat, in-ground is a hundred and twenty-five dollars because we have to check electricity and make sure that it's up to code with the fences. And then above ground, there's a flat seventy-five dollars and that's really to cover our cost of inspection for those. Everything has a application fee of thirty-five dollars. So if you're just doing an in-ground swimming pool, it's a hundred and twenty-five plus the application fee of thirty-five. So it would be a hundred and sixty dollars for an in-ground swimming pool to, for a permit. And once again, all we are doing is bringing the, the value of what we were charging back in two thousand and four up to two thousand and twenty-four. In twenty-four, in two thousand and four, we didn't have anything for solar. So we brought that to thirty cents a, a square foot for, for the solar. Also, with building permits, when you're building a new home or you're building addition, we would like builders to come in and say, here's the building plans, here's my electrician, here's my plumber I'm using. It doesn't usually happen that way. So what happens is they come in and say, here's my building plans, my electrician will be in to file a building permit. And that's more time. So what we're encouraging them to do is that we're telling them that if you do not submit your electric, your electrician plans with your building permit, it's gonna cost you seventy-five dollars plus an application fee of thirty-five dollars. Because now we have to look into that file, grab those documents and make sure they get into the right file to cover that. It's trying to help the building department not have as much paper in to lose, so to speak. Because you get this from the electrician, you get this from the plumber, you get this from your mechanical guy. Now all of a sudden, they gotta commingle it all and say, okay, wait a second, here's your building permit for everything, for a new home.
And that fee is based upon one permit that includes three things?
That, the sixty-eight cents would include all of that if you do it all at once.
And one application fee?
And one application fee. If you don't, if you do a piecemeal, it's a separate application fee plus seventy-five dollars, plus seventy-five dollars if you, with your plumber and, and everything else. We understand here in the town of Merrimack that, that building permits, if you have a contractor, those costs are being passed along to our residents. We're just trying to cover our costs with the residential building permits. And the same thing with mechanical. If you're replacing a furnace or a boiler or a mini-split or putting one in, it's just seventy-five dollars plus the application fee of, of thirty-five dollars. If you do it all at once, when you come in with your building permit at the beginning, then it's just that square footage of sixty-eight cents. But if you do it separately, those are the costs. Trying to make it as simple as possible to say, here you go, instead of this, because I got a building permit this year. Honestly, he told me the price, I wrote out the check, I said, here you go. I was like, all right, how do I know how much it's really gonna cost me? And I had to go back and say, okay, this is this big, three hundred and twenty-two square feet, this is how much it is, this is how much it is for electricity, this is how much it is for this, this is how much it is for that. And to do it all, and then it came out, you know, you, you have to figure it out. A simple resident who's just doing an addition, sixty-eight cents a square foot, three hundred and twenty-two square feet, here's the check, and nine thirty-five dollars, it's a lot easier than trying to figure everything out and, you know, plus, pluses, pluses. So that's what we're looking at for residential, is to streamline it and really, like, once again, I know I keep saying this, I keep harping on it, but we're just bringing up the value of two thousand and four dollar to two thousand and twenty-four and trying to simplify it for the residents. The big expense that we have are the commercial, the commercial industrial building permits and because those really do take a lot more time. If you're coming into a residence, you can walk around, it doesn't take as much. But when you're going into a business or one of these multi-tenant buildings that we've had in the past, it takes a long time. We actually had to hire a separate, excuse me, a separate building inspector just to inspect our residential, why our building inspectors here were doing the inspection of those multi-tenants. Because there's a lot more facets to commercial industrial. Whereas an individual might have one air conditioning unit, a building of that size might have four or five or six. And each one has to be inspected and they take time to inspect it to make sure the wiring's right and, and the mechanicals are working the way they're supposed to be working. So the, the commercial industrial is a little bit more money. We're proposing fifty dollars for the application fee. And then a building permit is on, a minimum is a hundred dollars. And then for new constructions, forty-five cents a square foot, foundations is twenty-five cents a square foot, renovations is twenty-five cents, a swimming pool is twenty-five cents a square foot and solar is thirty cents a square foot. So on, on those, because of, it's easier to do with square footage because we get the big plans and it shows it all. It's easier to calculate it versus a residential. Once again, if they don't bring their electrical plans in when they submit it, they have to pay that permit fee of fifty dollars and then they get charged five cents a square foot or a new service is a hundred dollars. So we go through and, and look at what we're charging and trying to keep in, in line with what we're charging with other people and trying to really recover some of our costs that we are expending on our building permits with having two, three people in that building department, two that go do the inspection and one lady who sits, sits in the office to make sure they get out and, and inspect when they're supposed to inspect or get new plans and things of that sort. We are also going to a new software system that is online. So this will also simplify that online. So it'll be easier for it to calculate than to say, okay, you gotta check this box, that box, this box. And then somebody in the office has to look and say, wait a second, you're asking for this, you didn't check that box. This is your fee. So it'll be a lot easier when we go through the, the new software system with this kind of fee structure. And then the last thing I would like to say is that we did kinda try to run some models of, of what, you know, of residential screen and porch would cost, a sixteen by twenty-two and then a, a porch and then a sixteen by twelve deck. It would be six hundred and forty square feet, it would be a hundred and twenty-eight forty, plus the thirty-five dollars would be a hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents for a sixteen by twelve deck and a sixteen by twenty-eight port, screen and porch. And then, you know, so we did try to do some of these to see where we're at with this. If we, if we implemented this, as of January first this year, the building department estimates that we'd be about seventy-eight, eighty thousand dollars additional revenue versus, you know, versus what we are, are, would have been out from prior year, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, how much additional revenue?
About seventy-eight thousand dollar additional, additional revenue. So.
Did you have some, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so on here, like, it says point six, oh, sorry. Says point six-eight cents, that's sixty-eight cents, not point six-eight cents.
It's sixty-eight cents.
So.
It's sixty-eight cents, it's, it should be a dollar sign.
Yeah.
And thirty cents should be a dollar sign, yes.
Yeah, and then on the second page too.
Yeah, there, there is some cleanup that we have to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure somebody didn't say.
Yeah, no, 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 that's a great catch.
You know, I would have been trying that.
No, no, that's, that's a great catch, that's a great catch, it should be a dollar sign.
I owe you three dollars.
Yeah. And that was the other thing too, we used to have minimums. Minimum of fifty dollars. It's like, really? How, how do you know if you got above the minimum or below the minimum, just straight flatlined it? But no, that was a great catch and we'll make that change.
It should all be consistent as well.
Yeah, we.
Whenever you have cents, you should have the dollar sign or point.
Yeah, or call it sixty-eight cents.
Either one, whatever the consistency is.
Yeah.
Paul, did we used to have where, if you, the refund policy, was there always a refund situation there or is that not changed?
There, there is a refund policy, that's, you know, one thing, that we did have a refund policy. So every, if the work hasn't started, you'll get everything except the application fee back.
And twenty-five percent of the permit fee, so that's what I was wondering, has that always been that way?
It's, yeah.
No, we've always had a refund policy on that. Twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is.
We, we've also, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just saw it myself, we increased the re-inspection fee. So if we have to go out more than three times, we used to only charge thirty dollars. And really, that didn't cover our cost, the fifty dollars covers our cost if we have to go out more than three times to inspect somebody.
More than three times?
More than three times.
More than two times.
Is what this says.
Yeah, the first three, yeah, it failed, failed, three times failed. So if I go out there three times to do, uh, wind, uh, say a circuit breaker and it fails once, it fails twice, and we come back out for the third time and it failed again, the fourth time you have to pay for that. Because we're giving you saying why it failed. You should be able to fix it.
Get a new electrician.
This says the third inspection that gets charged. Work that requires a third or more inspections.
Yeah, that would be if you failed it already twice, the third one, it would be.
Well, you were just saying the fourth one, so I'm just trying to understand.
You said the fourth.
They, they changed that, it was, it was, it's the third, they changed it, when we talked, it was the fourth, they must have changed that. They, they slipped that one into with the dollar, point and the dollar and the cent sign.
All right, and then the other thing I have is the surcharge for work that begins before a permit is pulled.
We're just trying to make sure that people don't go ask for forgiveness.
Yeah, but if it's not done right, they have to redo it anyhow.
Right.
And if it's beyond a point, if you've buried something you can't see now, they have to rip it out, so you can be seen.
But that, really, we're trying to, that, that is there so that it's, and we could talk about that, but that was put in because it was trying to make people not ask for forgiveness, say, oops, I didn't know I was supposed to get a building permit.
Even though they knew.
Even though they knew.
Well, should have known.
Yeah, they should know.
But it also, it appears that that was there before, but if I read it correctly, it went from twenty.
To two hundred.
Twenty percent to two hundred percent.
Yeah. That was a recommendation by our building official to bank, bring it up that, that much. Twenty percent wasn't as much of a slap on the wrist and ask for forgiveness as if it's two hundred percent, it's there. There are, it's people that should know better that we're catching for some of this stuff.
So this is a two hundred percent surcharge, so if it's a hundred and fifty dollar building permit, we're gonna charge them three hundred plus the hundred and fifty dollar building permit, they're gonna end up paying four hundred and fifty dollars when they should have paid a hundred and fifty at the beginning.
Correct. That, that, like I said, that percentage we can talk about, but it's steep.
Okay, and then.
We're trying to avoid.
I'm, I'm interested in, because I thought twenty percent was reasonable. But that's just me, but also, the work started at two different locations, but the second one is stared, you forgot a T. That was a lesser concern of mine though. Page, oh, there's not paged.
Which one are you, what are you talking about?
Uh, it says work started without permit, it's.
Oh, yeah, right here, yeah, I see it, I see it.
Work starred.
Yeah. So. So, yeah, I'm, I think I'm good with everything except that, but.
Um, and your proposal, what?
I'd like to keep it at the twenty percent, I thought, if you have a four hundred dollar permit, twenty percent is eighty more bucks. You've got a two thousand dollar permit.
Could we bring the chief up? He, he spent a lot of time, a lot of time.
That's why I hate even saying it, chief.
Uh, he was hoping to go unscathed.
I know he was hoping that, but, you know, he's here, so might as well use it.
Take Paul off the hook.
Well, he probably gets some thinking behind it too.
Yeah, you know, thank you all for having us and trying to figure this out. In working with our staff, look, the twenty percent, it's not a deterrent. Two hundred percent says something. When you start looking at other communities, when they're trying to prevent problems, well, you gotta make it hurt somehow. Twenty cents on the dollar really isn't gonna hurt somebody. Two hundred percent's gonna make them wake up and go, oh, I guess I probably should do the right thing. We expect people to do the right thing anyway, and some people don't. So in order to send a message that Merrimack means business and if you're gonna do work here in town, we expect you to follow the rules like everybody else does. So, but we'll rec, you know, we'll go with whatever recommendation you go with. You know, we believe toward two hundred percent is a deterrent. And I don't know if you have any other questions about some of the stuff that we're looking at, but yeah, we did, like the town manager said, we tried to streamline everything and some of this is sticker shock, but we haven't done anything for twenty years. So we're, we're behind. And we didn't wanna commit, you know, start looking at other communities because this is Merrimack. So we figured, let's start simple. What is the value of that dollar, like the town manager said, let's just start there. If you wanna increase these in the future, we're certainly willing to do that and we'll look at anything you wish, but we needed to start somewhere. So we thought we'd at least get the value of the dollar today to cover some of the costs that we're doing. So that was the general concept behind all of this when we looked at everything.
So, chief, I like the simplicity of it, I think that's genius, that was a good move. But I, now that we've got what we believe it is to cover our costs and for a little while into the future, do we know what other communities are, are there, I don't wanna know what they do exactly, but are, are we in a good position?
We're still behind.
Okay.
So even doing this, we're not comparable to others, we're still behind some of the others. And I don't mind, remember, this is Merrimack and we'll do what we think is right.
Yeah, I was just curious how it all.
But no, we're, we're still behind some other communities, so we're, you know, but we wanted to start somewhere. And if you want further information going forward, like you just described, perhaps in a couple of years, we revisit this and then we can look at other communities and see what they're doing. But this is a huge step to do some of the increases that we're doing. So I don't wanna overburden people more than what we need to. So if we can be realistic and understand, yeah, you know, we've been neglected for twenty years doing this, let's at least make it right, you know, move forward if we feel we want to.
Does anyone have any idea as to that two hundred percent, what would be a more appropriate percent?
I mean, in my mind, the, the people that are gonna end up falling under that are the people that build a shed, the people that build a porch, it's, it's not gonna be the residential developer, right? He's, he's gonna go get his permit, but it's gonna be someone that's building a shed in their backyard and maybe didn't realize that they were gonna need a permit. Do we really wanna levy a two hundred percent penalty or surcharge, however we're gonna call it, to the person that, to the homeowner that's building their shed or, or deck in their back, backyard? I thi, I think two hundred's awful steep in my opinion, I would, in my mind, you know, fifty is, is a lot.
That's why I like twenty, you know, I think, you know, and I get it's, I get it, I, but I think you're right. You build a house and pull in a two thousand dollar permit, you're gonna be doing it upfront because that's the way it works with something like that.
Sometimes they don't.
Really?
Really. Because they're on a schedule and they don't wait for the building permit to be approved and they're putting shovels in the ground and they're building.
But if they backfill a foundation, Paul, or a footing, are, are we gonna, we would likely, I would imagine, make them dig it up.
We'd have to go through legal to see if we're legally allowed to do that. Some of these things that we think we can do, we can't.
Okay, 'cause see, when it comes to building permits, I always believed it was so, we made sure we got your assessed value correctly. Everything else was just extra. I didn't believe it was all about safety, even though, because if we overlook something, we're not liable for overlooking it.
Well, I think that's gonna change in the industry.
It should, we should be liable, we're making them do it, but.
Well, and a few, few months ago, we had the insurance services organization come out to our department and they're starting to evaluate building divisions for different communities. Now, that ISO organization is the huge umbrella organization that kinda tells all the insurance companies the level of risk that these structures have. So, and I'm sure you saw that building that just fell down in Florida. Well, they're finding out that inspectors may not have done the right thing on the front end when the building was first put together. So now they're looking at, well, does your building official go get the right certifications? Does he go seek continuing education? Does he have the right credentials to do the job? Does he have the right training to do the job? Do we follow the right codes and standards? So as we move forward with all of these things, we're probably going to be put on the hook at some point, well, your building official missed it. Where is the sign off for this, where is the check off for that? You know, when we hire a new person to do inspections, did you hire the right person? Because we're gonna be held accountable at some point. It's coming someday, and someday is coming really fast, unfortunately.
Would, would the council feel more comfortable if there was a caveat in there that they could seek abatement requests through the town manager slash town council? So that the individual who's building their shed in their backyard doesn't get hit with, you know, a three hundred dollar bill for a hundred dollar shed.
Right.
Um, kinda deal, with, with the council, if we put a caveat in there for that. The commercial guys, I say, no excuse, you know it. It isn't, it isn't Joe homeowners going in there and doing commercial stuff.
They deserve the two hundred percent, the commercial people.
So, so do you think?
Not that, not that.
That would be a better solution is just having that abatement. And maybe reducing it a little bit to seventy-five percent, but have that so that the Joe homeowner doesn't.
Nancy had something, Paul?
Well, to, to that point, and I just, I don't know about the legality of this, but is there a way that there could be separate, a homeowner versus a commercial? Could the, could the fine or the consequence be different, based on whether it's a homeowner that was pulling the permit, as opposed to, if I was hiring a builder to build something, I'm paying them and assuming they're doing the right thing, I mean, if that's their job and they're hired to do that, that, there should be some expectation, I would think, within the business, right, that they.
They have to start doing definitions and stuff, I would suspect.
Yeah, what, what you can do is that if, if it's a residential and, and it's, for instance, Paul T. McCallie going in, uh, coming in for a building permit versus O'Regan Construction coming in, it's still on a residential property, so it's still there, it goes, the building permit really stays with the property. It's just in that person's name, and really what that name does, it's who's placing the phone call to building saying, I'm ready for an inspection, and who's sitting there and ask, answering the questions of the building inspector when he comes out and says, hey, why'd you put, uh, faced insulation in here if you're not gonna sheet rock the building? You don't have that, you gotta pull it out. Okay, so, you know, those are the things that, that you do with the residential, the commercial guys are, are using contractors.
I think an appellate type process would be really helpful, cause you're right, I mean, if you're hiring Joe's decks to build a deck at your house, you expect Joe to get the right permits. Joe, so Joe's gonna apply, and if Joe doesn't apply, but he's gonna charge you for that permit fee as the consumer, and he builds a deck without you even, you know, you're just assuming he's doing the right thing. But if Joe Q homeowner does it himself and doesn't know he needs to get the permit, he can come in, appeal and say, I didn't know I needed a permit, and we can confirm it's Joe Q homeowner, not Joe's decks, then, uh, you know, we could do something like that, I think that would, that, and I don't think that's.
I like the idea.
A big process to put together if we wanted to do that.
Just write a couple of sentences off about.
I was just thinking, an abatement request can be applied.
Yeah.
Through the town manager?
Yeah, town manager's office.
Could it be that simple?
It could be that simple.
For the homeowner?
Anybody. He's obviously going to deny the commercial. Right?
Anybody could make an appeal, and then we'd have to decide whether the appeal is legitimate or not.
A form will have to be established to, but why, what basis are you making the application?
It's like everything else, when, when we ask, when we ask for, for information to abate an ambulance bill, we ask for specific information, and they can't just come and say, I just want an abatement, no. You gotta prove to me why you didn't do it, and it could be as simple as, hey.
I didn't know.
I didn't know, I didn't know it was gonna be a hundred and ten, I didn't know the, the limit was a hundred square feet, I built it at a hundred and ten, I'm sorry.
Right.
I'll get my permit, kinda deal for a shed, or something of that sort. And, and then it could be the Joe, Joe, Joe homeowner could say, I hired Joe's decks to build my deck, here's the fee, they charged me for it, I don't know why they didn't pull the permit.
Right.
And this way, we could say, okay, you're off the hook for the permit, but Joe's decks, you're not.
I, I concur that two hundred percent is a bit steep.
It's steep.
A bit steep. I, I would go along with seventy-five percent. Cause again, most of the, those cases that are homeowners are gonna be abated, so that percentage is gonna be moot. It's the people who have done it consciously, or the, uh, the builders that don't wanna put in, they're the ones that are gonna be zapped.
My question would be, and I, I don't know, and you could have a better sense, is the seventy-five percent zapped enough to make it worth it? Or do you have to?
What's your appro, what's your opinion?
I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking that, I would imagine, if this is an issue, it's enough of an issue that it's costing, um, staff time and everything else, so that, you know, if I have a lot of money and it's gonna be an extra hundred bucks, what do I care? If I can keep my, my schedule on, it's probably worth it to them, so maybe a little bit more would be averse.
What's your opinion?
A hundred.
I'm okay with that.
Well, what I would like to do when it comes time for a motion is to break it into two pieces. So that way I don't have to vote against the whole package.
And what's your, what's your idea?
I just, I, the mo, I, everything else, I think I'm comfortable with.
Except the percent?
Except, yeah, I don't mind the abatement component, but I s, I think that's, I still think it's excessive, so if we break it in half, the majority of us think it's appropriate to have it at a hundred, or seventy-five, or two hundred, we can do that, and I don't have to worry about sullying the vote on the main thing, the main.
Yeah, I, I see what Finley's basically saying is that, he's, he would just like us to vote on the portion that says, work started without a permit, the surcharge of assessed, the motion would be approved, the surcharge shall be assessed where work begins prior to the permit issuance, surcharge shall be.
Whatever, number, if it's more than twenty-five percent, I'm probably against it, and so.
Okay, you'll just vote against it, but we, it might still pass if we do it.
Yeah, yes.
You're warning us that you'll vote against it.
The bulk of, everything about it, I like.
Turn down the revenue portion.
You wanna support the policy, you don't wanna support that line.
The number.
If it's silly, I could still be a no vote, and it'll be six one, or whatever, it's all good.
I, I get. I mean, hundreds a lot.
Make sure you mic's on.
I'm okay with the hundred.
Can you give us an estimate on how many of these you do a year, and like, percentage wise, how many of them are commercial?
Not off, not off the top of my head, no. I do know it's, you know, it's, we do find them, and how many that is.
So they're like fifty percent residential, fifty percent individuals?
All, all I get is, you know, the complaints from my inspectors and building official.
Can't believe I found one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we looked into that, to be honest with you, um, I've looked into that, it's, it's, it's hard to say. Because the last few years, there's a lot more commercial that's been going on in this town, but we've also had a lot of residential at the same time. We've had two neighborhoods of almost seventy homes each, that's seventy building permits there, but then we've had two major apartment buildings of two forty and Gilbert Crossing going up at the same time, which was, I don't even, you know, a hundred plus, uh, so it, it's very hard to say which year's which, and some of these commercial people know that, let me get my foundation in by April first, I won't start building it, I'll get my supplies to the site as of April first, and then I'll wait, because that's when we do our assessments, is April first. I'll start building and get, pull my permit on April fifteenth, so that I get that portion of it in.
So they're playing with the.
It's timing some of these things, too, with it, so, uh.
So the hundred percent means you're just paying double, right?
Yeah, that's what that means. So we can get that answer for you, we'll do a study over the last three years, and we'll get that answer for you of breakout between commercial and residential.
And a curiosity thing, not important, is whether or not you can dig up, if, if somebody buries their footing, and you can't tell as an inspector what's going on. I, I'd like to know whether or not we can, in fact.
Right.
Because that.
Permit?
Yeah, right.
That's the point of a permit.
Theoretically, we should be able to have them dig it out.
We, we'll get that, we'll get that answer as well.
Not, not as important for, especially tonight, I don't.
But it will be something, we, we'll come up and we'll get that information as well.
All right, so it's a pleasure of the council.
Who wants to do the motion? I'll do the motion, and it could be revised if people want. Uh, move that the policy regarding work started without a permit on the proposed code enforcement.
Nancy, could you start with the policy excluding that portion first?
And it's a fee schedule, it's not a policy, we purposely pulled this out of our ordinances and policies, this is a fee schedule.
So we could do this instead of.
So we could do this instead of six means.
Say it again.
If you could do the policy first pulling out that, um, because otherwise it's in the policy, and then I have to vote against the policy.
Okay.
It's not a policy, he keeps trying to.
I'm sorry, I do.
I understand that, we understand that now.
Even after I was corrected two seconds ago.
Okay, so you're asking for the approval of the whole proposed fee schedule, and then we'll change that particular piece.
Without this, yeah, without the starting without a permit, and then you can add that at the end. I'm sorry for being difficult.
Or excluding it, I just wanna do it the right way.
Yeah, no, in that way, cause if it's in the schedule, then.
So I move, hopefully I get it this way, move to approve the proposed code enforcement and inspection fee schedule excluding the work started without a permit section.
Wonderful, Nancy, thank you. Motion by Nancy Harrington.
Now, nobody's gonna second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jennifer. No further discussion on that part.
So, with, with, just with the addition, we're gonna correct all the dollars and cents.
As discussed.
With corrections as discussed.
With corrections as discussed.
Thanks, Andy, thank you.
Second, will you agree to those?
Yes. Okay, all right, there's no further discussion on that, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero, thank you.
Now, I would like to have included, right, in the code enforcement and inspection fee schedule, the following section entitled, work started without a permit. A surcharge shall be assessed where work begins prior to permit, permit issuance. The surcharge shall be a hundred percent of the permit fee, an abatement request can be applied through the town manager.
Is there a second? Do you have that, Paul?
Mackenzie said second. Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, just one thing.
Yeah.
Uh, abatement requests can be applied for, through, you said able through, able.
Can be applied through, that's what I meant.
Applied for.
Oh, applied for, okay.
Applied for.
Through the, to the town manager.
Yeah, abatement requested, abatement can be requested, abatement can be applied for through the town manager's office.
There you go, okay.
Very good, second, uh, motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Mackenzie.
All those. That's sufficient wording, Paul, you think?
Yeah, yeah, cause it leaves it up, it leaves it up to me to, whether or not to, uh, approve or deny.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and you can, you can abate some, all, or none.
Correct.
Good, done.
Yeah.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, six, one, zero.
Oh, I was gonna say.
What did I say, oh, you thought I was supporting you?
No, no, I was waiting for you to go against.
You looked like you were voting for it.
Thank you.
I was adding votes.
Could we, could we just, for the minute taker, that was kinda mumbly, so could we just?
It's six, six, one, zero, six, one, zero, uh, I'm in opposition.
Thank you.
Which she would have known through the discussion.
And that would be Finley.
All right.
Rothaus with an R.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guys are tough, tough.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is approval of the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
I didn't even have a chance to read them.
Please, I'm sorry, I'm not looking, definitely let me know.
I just had one really minor correction, was on page two, line four, original should be originally.
Originally denied the special exception.
Yeah.
Correct.
Good catch.
She was wondering if that was too minor to bring up.
It's a good catch then.
Who was the punctuation one, who, who did those?
It depends, Tim Tenneb was. But we need people like that.
She's a perfect replacement for Barb, though.
I count on, I, I count on people doing those, cause I know they've been thorough.
It must be the seat.
You're off again, boss, that's all good. So, uh.
I move approval of the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, August fifteenth, as corrected.
Motion by Nancy Harrington.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? You've won, you're, you're good? You're good?
Oh, I said yes, I'm sorry.
Um, seven, zero, zero. Comments from the press, seeing nobody in the public, there's no public, comments from the council?
I just wanna thank Maramack for coming out to vote during the primary election, I hope it went well for everybody, it certainly went well for me, uh, working the polls, and I, uh, look forward to the general election on November fifth, and just be patient, cause there's gonna be plenty of people out then, and, uh, we'll all have a great time, thank you.
Should, uh, under, under Tom's commentary, should we say that we're looking for, for people to help?
Perfect.
Uh, poll checklist folks and everything, so if anybody wants to come in, I don't remember what the pay is, I just was told to, but it's a paying gig, not gonna retire, but. If you're looking for something to do on election day, it's a lot of fun.
We'll feed you at least, so.
You'll get fed lunch and dinner, yes, and.
To contact town hall.
Coffee in the morning.
Actually, if you're looking to work the polls, um, as a, as ballots inspector, or anything to do with the polls, except to be a town council designee, you would need to contact the town moderator, or the town clerk tax collector, so that your name could be put on a list. If you wanna volunteer and, uh, sit with a town councillor for the day, um, you would call the town manager's office, my office, and, uh, we'd put you on a list. Uh, got some great feedback from the people that did work with the town council, they're already signing up for November.
Nice.
Some of them, so, yeah, so it's.
So we didn't scare them off?
We didn't scare them off.
Is that a paying gig, too?
That's a paid gig, too. And then at the end of the night, we need, we need people to count the ballots on the back end, so if you're willing to count ballots at the end of the night, or you're working during the day, and you wanna volunteer at the end of the night to count ballots, we'll, we'll accept those, too, please see the town clerk tax collector or the moderator, and they'll get your name on a list. There is some training that you need to go through if you wanna be a ballot inspector, or if you wanna be, uh, uh, checking off at those, uh, the books. When we come in, there's some, uh, there's a training, but the moderator puts it on about a week before the election, and, uh, we'll, uh, it's an easy, it's an easy training, it's, it's, uh, they'll, they'll train you up, then you'll be able to do it, and in October, I was waiting for some of the dust to settle, but in October, I'm trying to get the Secretary of State's office to really.
Clarify.
Clarify a bunch of things, um, what the town council's responsibility, what the moderator's responsibility, what the town clerk's responsibility is for an election. So that everybody has a clear understanding, including the public, it's been a while since we've done that, so everybody has a clear understanding. When you have a town clerk that's been here for thirty years, and you have a moderator that's been here that much longer, you kinda rely on them, and, uh, we've, we've changed, so, uh, I think that would be a good exercise for everybody, including the town council and the public, to understand what everybody's responsibility is at an election.
Perfect, good idea. All right, anything further? Accept the motion?
Move to adjourn?
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Jennifer, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven, zero, zero, thank you very much.